Okay, good morning everyone. Welcome to today's Adults Health and Active Lifestyle Scrutiny Board. My name is Andrew Scopes, I'm a councillor for Beeston-Holbeck and I'm the Chair of this board and this meeting today. This is a public meeting and it's being webcast live, so please be aware of that. In a bit, I'll ask everyone to introduce themselves for that reason. Today's meeting is going to be managed a little bit differently to our normal meetings, a bit more like a... because it's a call-in, we need some... there's more formal elements and we'll be having a formal vote and we need a mover and a seconder for the motion at the end, which I'll explain in due course. The other thing I think I just need to say that's unusual for this meeting is because it's our first meeting of the municipal year, we usually have an additional non-voting representative from Health Watch as an additional board member to add value. Because it's the first meeting of the municipal year, we haven't actually elected that person yet or those people yet, so I'm going to start in a minute when we get to that point, we're going to elect or choose whether or not to nominate an extra person on our board as a non-voting representative. So we'll get to that shortly too. So with that, I'm going to start by asking board members to introduce themselves and then we'll go from there. So as I said, I'm Andrew Scopes, I'm the Chair of the board and we'll go to councillor Flint.
Morning, I'm Emma Flint, councillor in Wheatwood and subbing for councillor Taylor.
Morning, I'm Hayley Fransmier, councillor for Moretown and Meadwood.
Sorry, I'm councillor David Jenkins and from Killembach and Seacroft, subbing for, I think councillor Hallroyd.
Good morning, councillor Jones from Horstworth and I'm subbing today.
Good morning councillor Kevin Ritchie, Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Good morning councillor Bromley, Horstworth and Rodden Ward.
Councillor David Blackburn, Farnley and Wiltley Ward.
Councillor Sandy Ley, Otley and Eden Ward.
Councillor Lyn Buckley, Allwoody Ward.
Good morning councillor Caroline Anderson, Adeline Wharfdale Ward.
Good morning, I'm Angela Brogdon, the Principal Scrutiny Advisor to the board.
Morning, Nicole Walker, Head of Legal Services and Advisor to the board today.
Super, thank you. And now I'm going to ask the guests to introduce themselves who will become more relevant as we get into their proper agenda items, but I'm going to start with councillor Firth, please.
Thank you Chair, councillor Sam Firth for the Harewood Ward who has asked for the call-in today. I'd like to pass on to my witnesses.
Good morning, Michelle Atkinson, Chief Officer Leeds Care Association.
Good morning, my name is Mary Louise Bree and I manage and own Alexandra Court Residential Home.
Good morning, I'm Lesley Robinson, Assistant Director of Commissioned Services at HC1. We're a national care provider with six homes in Leeds.
Good morning, I'm Amy Walker, Legal Advisor to Adults and Health today.
Good morning, I'm Cash, I'm the Deputy Director for Integrated Commissioning.
Good morning, I'm Caroline Barrier, I'm the Director of Adults and Health at Leeds City Council.
Hi, good morning everyone, I'm councillor Fiona Venna, I'm the Cabinet Member for Equality, Health and Wellbeing, but for this meeting I'm covering for councillor Salma Arif who's the Cabinet Member for Adults and Health. I was the previous portfolio holder before councillor Arif and I'm covering for her today as she's away, thank you.
Thank you very much everyone, and can I just remind everyone to make sure they bring this microphone close to their mouth when they're speaking so we can all hear you and so the public can hear you if and when they watch online. Okay, I'm now going to pass on to Angela to take us through items one to five, please.
Thank you Chair, so in relation to item one, there are no appeals. Item two, there are no items requiring the exemption of the public. Item three, there are no late items. In relation to item four, can I ask members to disclose any interests in accordance with Leeds City Council's Code of Conduct? And I shall take silence as none, thank you. In relation to item five, Chair, we have apologies from councillor Gibson with councillor Johns attending as substitute member, councillor Hallroyd with councillor Jenkins attending as substitute member, and councillor Taylor with councillor Flint attending as substitute member, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay, I'm going to move on. Councillor Ritchie.
I don't think it's relevant, but I just want to draw the board's attention that I am a board member of Aspire, but I think the call-in just relates to home care, doesn't it, and the care homes, and also leap one as well, so some of the third sector partners who are involved in some of the uplifts, but they're not relevant today, I don't think. I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thanks councillor Ritchie, and confirm they're non pecuniary interests. Yeah, great, thank you, so even... so that's okay. Okay councillor Firth.
Can I also declare that I am also a council director of Aspire CBS2.
Yep, okay, thank you, those are both noted, but again, that's non pecuniary interest and so we can move on. Okay, so just moving on to item six, I'm going to assume members have read the paper. I'm going to propose that as per last year, we appoint the two co-chairs of Health Watch, Jane Mischenko and Jonathan Phillips, to share the role. So can I have a seconder for that, please? Yep, all those in favour? That's unanimous, so Jonathan is here today in his role, so you're now welcome to the table. I'm just going to just feel for a second while you get to your seat and then you can introduce yourself formally. So when you're ready, Jonathan.
Thank you Chair, as you said, I'm Jonathan Phillips, one of two co-chairs of Health Watch and we're delighted to have been asked once again to sit as a co-opted member, non-voting, on this scrutiny panel, thank you.
Thank you very much Jonathan, and just to say, I think both of you add value to the questions that we ask, and most of what scrutiny is, we don't actually vote, we do it on collaborative basis, but obviously today's slightly different, as you're aware, because of the calling, the nature of the calling. Okay, so now we're going to move on to item seven, which is the call-in. This starts on page, I think it's page 15 of your PACs and has been brought by councillor Firth who's in attendance today and will present shortly. I'm going to pass over to Angela to introduce the paper and then I'll run through how I'm going to run the meeting. Okay, thank you Angela.
Thank you Chair, so just to highlight that the call-in request that's being considered today refers to the key decision that was taken by the Director of Adults and Health on the 22nd of May and relates to the annual fee review of externally commissioned adult care services for 2025-26. As the Chair's just mentioned, the call-in request form itself is appended to the report and you'll find this on page 15 of the PAC and other appended documents include a copy of the delegated decision notice and the associated report to the decision-maker. I'm now just going to cover some key elements of the report that covers or advises on the procedural aspects of calling in the decision. So in terms of the grounds for calling in the decision, it is made clear within respective procedure rules that a call-in request must detail on the approved call-in request form why, in the opinion of the signatories, the decision was not taken in accordance with the principles of decision-making or where relevant issues do not appear to have been taken into consideration. So the principles of decision-making are set out in the procedure rules, but they're also set out in Article 13 of the Constitution. So the board's advised that today's meeting is specific to the key decision that's been called in and that issues outside of the decision, including any related decisions, may not be considered as part of the board's decision regarding the outcome of the call-in. The board must decide whether the decision was made in accordance with paragraph four of the executive and decision-making rules, so that's those matters listed as potential grounds for the call-in that are in the call-in application. There is a recommended structure for today's meeting, that's referenced in paragraph eight of the report and the Chair will be setting this out shortly. Having reviewed the decision, the scrutiny board will need to agree what action it wishes to take and may pursue one of two courses of action. Option one is to release the decision for implementation. If the scrutiny board chooses this option, the decision will be immediately released for implementation and the decision may not be called in again. Option two is to recommend to the decision-maker that the decision be reconsidered. If the scrutiny board chooses this option, a report of the scrutiny board will be produced and submitted to the relevant director for consideration. The process for producing this report is also set out in paragraphs 15 to 20 of the agenda report, and if for any reason the board does not agree any of these options, then option one is adopted by default and the decision will be released for implementation and again, may not be called in again. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, so I'll start with any questions from the board on that, I can't see anyone indicating, okay. So in terms of how I'm going to run the meeting today, I'm going to ask councillor Firth in a few minutes to present his case, which is set out in his form, call-in request form, and then I'm going to allow each of his three speakers a chance to comment as well. And as per the previous call-in, the guest speakers I'm going to limit to four minutes for their initial comments, then obviously you can ask questions later on. So we're going to have the case for, and then councillor Venna and Caroline and her team will respond to that, and at which point we'll have the questions, so members, at that point if you want to ask questions, please come in and indicate and do so, and that can be to anyone who's come to present to us today. And then once we've gone through that, I will ask councillor Venna and Caroline to make some closing remarks, and then finally councillor Firth will have an opportunity to make some closing remarks, and at which point, after all of that, we'll then come to looking at what motion we want to move forwards. And again, as per the previous call-in, we'll be doing it in a formal sort of proposal, second and vote way. So with that, I'm going to start by handing over to councillor Firth, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed Chair, and thank you to the board as well for allowing this call-in today. I just want to stress, this is a really important request that I'm making in behalf of not just ourselves but cross-party as well in terms of this situation, because we do appreciate there is a restricted financial envelope this council deals with, we talk about that very regularly and have done for a number of years now, and in particular, the impact that that has on the most vulnerable people in our city. So I'm delighted to, although we're bringing this unfortunate call-in today, that I've been joined by three witnesses from the sector, people with a lot of experience that we're really looking forward to hear what they've got to say later in terms of being able to add more meat on the bone about why I feel this decision needs to be reconsidered and taken forward, because of the nature of the three principles that I've set out in the call-in. That was on proportionality and actually whether the actual decision itself will have the desired outcome that we're looking for in this decision, whether actually the clarity of the aims and the purpose that this actually set out to do is going to actually be achieved and what they actually were, and also looking at the consultation that took place with the sector at the same time to ensure that that has meant that there is a fruitful outcome coming from there. In terms of where we stand at this moment in time, I mentioned that we have a difficult financial envelope and social care in particular is an area that is full of uncertainty, not helped by the previous government as well as also this government, and that's why I want to stress this is not a political situation there. We are in a situation where the money that is available to those in the sector is finite and therefore every penny counts in terms of providing that. And as mentioned in my particular submission, one particular emphasis is on the fact of providers being able to swallow not only just increasing costs, be that national insurance or be that the rise in, rightful rise in the real living wage, but also as well as that, looking at how they can pay those wages and whether, given that we signed up to the Ethical Care Charter as a council back in 2015, whether actually we can allow a situation where the providers themselves are not able to provide the level of increase that we have committed to as part of the financial envelope that we're providing to them. We want to address in the views that we're raising today that we haven't seen the full response from the consultation that began in February. That was a survey that was sent via email to providers across the city and when that was sent through, the link didn't work at first, but then it was rectified, and there was some really helpful feedback, I understand, put forward, and I really value that officers gave me the time to discuss that with them before today. But what I would stress is that we would have liked to have seen that in advance when this decision was taken, because I appreciate a summary, including a key fact, that 50% of respondents stated that they will have to potentially look, well, very likely look at reducing their capacity to take on home care or residential packages in the city if this is not increased. And also more importantly on that, then looking at how the feedback from that consultation has had that impact. So there are going to be three witnesses, they're going to be raising various different areas. Michelle is going to speak first, talking about the impact on the sector and the wider proportionality, and otherwise than that, we've also got further responses from Mary Lou and Lesley, who are going to give you a view from the coalface, and also more importantly about how they felt they'd been treated in the consultation, and make sure that at the end of the day, we can then come out and ensure that the most vulnerable people in our city are looked after and supported for a long, long time to come. So thank you very much Chair and look forward to your questions going forward.
Thank you very much councillor Firth for those initial comments. So I'm going to start by bringing in Michelle, and as I said, I'm going to time you, give you four minutes, I'm on my timer, not playing on the internet, you'll be pleased to know. So over to you, Michelle.
Thank you Chair for allowing us to turn to express our concerns. I'd really like to focus on the concerns that we have around the potential impacts on service users and we believe that this warrants urgent attention. We know that there will be reduced choice of providers, both in terms of home care services and residential care services. There's a significant risk that service users will face diminished choice. We're already aware that some providers are declining local authority-funded placements or packages of care, and obviously this directly reduces the options available to individuals in need of support. We know that there will be a decline in service quality. Providers will be unable to make the necessary investments in the services and the staffing, and this will affect the quality of care that is being delivered, which will have direct consequences for the service users. We know that there'll be package handbacks. Providers will begin to hand back existing packages of care because they can't afford to deliver those packages of care within the proposed funding envelope. This will not only be disruptive and distressing for the individuals receiving the care and support and their families, but also for the staff that are supporting them. And is the capacity within social work teams to deal with this when we start to see this happening? We potentially will see either care home beds being closed or care homes closing. We have real concerns that should care homes close about choices for service users that are living in those care homes. We've recently had an example of a care home in one area of the city, the residents were offered placements in completely different areas of the city, which meant it was really, really difficult for their aged relatives to get to them, to visit them. So we have real concerns about care home closures. And also about the longer lens of time that people will be waiting for services. If we have reductions in both home care services and care homes at the local authority price, then people waiting for a service will experience delays to those services starting, because providers are risk refusing to accept local authority-funded clients. Furthermore, proposed funding arrangements do not equip providers with the necessary resources to meet the current contractual obligations, and this raises concerns about the ability of the sector to respond to service recipients' needs in a timely and appropriate manner. We think the impact on the workforce will be a major concern. We know that there are already vacancies across the sector, but staff are likely to leave the sector in search of better paid opportunities. Training will be reduced to mandatory requirements only, and again, this will affect the quality and safety. And recruitment and retention challenges are unlikely to be addressed by the proposals as they stand. There's a clear duty under the Care Act to consider provider costs and ensure the development of a diverse and sustainable care market, and yet the report provides no indication of how provider costs are being factored into these proposals. We know that there's capacity within the sector, but it's important to note that that capacity is not all available to the local authority at the proposed local authority funding rates. We're already operating in a system that's under significant strain and it's deeply concerning that those experiencing the greatest health inequalities and the poorest in our city will be disproportionately affected and seemingly offered the least favourable outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle, excellently timed speech there, so appreciate your comments. Okay, so I'm going to pass on to Mary Louise next, the same guy, so you may start now.
Thank you. Bear with me because I'm a bit nervous. My name is Mary Lou and I manage Alexandra Court, which is a small family-run residential care home in Leeds that has been open for 33 years, and I've personally managed the home since 2007, taking over from my mum and dad who founded it. It's not just a business, it's a family legacy built on care, compassion and commitment to our community. But for the first time in our history, I am seriously concerned that we won't be able to continue. The proposed 3.5% uplift is simply not viable for small homes like mine. Our annual operating costs now exceed £1 million, and that's without any borrowing. If we had any borrowing, that could rise to £1.1 million. Our staffing costs alone are £700,000 a year and they're rising due to wage requirements and retention issues. If we relied solely on local authority-funded residents, we'd be running a £100,000 annual loss. We've survived only by charging top-up fees and accepting private placements, but that model is no longer sustainable. Just three years ago, top-up fees made up 32% of our income, today they make up 40%. This means that more and more of the financial burden is being passed on to families, and at the minute, I've got two residents whose families can no longer afford their top-up payments. They're being forced to look for cheaper homes, and it literally breaks my heart because I want them to stay. I want to waive the top-up fee and say, don't worry about it, we'll manage, but if we do, we just won't survive. And to make matters worse, this year, the Quality Premium Payment, which previously recognised and rewarded good care, has been rescinded under the terms of the latest council contract. Last year, we were receiving £722 per week, per resident. Now, even with the 3.5% uplift, we will only receive £718 per week. We are not asking for large profits, we're asking for a funding model that lets us break even, retain staff and continue delivering safe, high-quality care. I can't help but feel that part of the reason home care providers received a revised uplift is because it's cheaper for the council to keep people at home than to pay for residential care. And while I fully support helping people remain in their homes for as long as they can, that can't come at the expense of the residential sector, because not everyone can be safely cared for at home. Many people need 24-hour support and a secure care environment. If we close, those people won't just vanish, they'll remain in hospital beds, unable to be discharged, putting further pressure on the NHS and increasing delays across the system. We're not in competition with home care because we're part of the same ecosystem, but when one part is neglected, especially one as essential as residential care, the entire system suffers. I love what I do. I'm proud of the home that we've built, but I cannot continue asking families to pay more and more, and I can't run a home with reduced funding disguised as an uplift. I would urge you to recognise the truth behind the numbers. A 3.5% increase that results in less funding than last year is not even an uplift, it's a step backwards. Please reconsider this decision before more homes like mine are forced to close their doors for good.
Thank you very much for sharing that, I appreciate that, and you had no reason to be nervous at all, you did a great job there presenting. Okay, I'm going to bring in Lesley next, so I'll start your time as well, thank you.
Thank you, and I, again, like Mary Lou, I'm nervous, I've never done this before, so please bear with me, and I haven't brought notes, I'm just speaking directly, and I wanted to bring some of my experience. I mentioned that I work for a national provider and I lead the team, a very small team of people who enter into these negotiations on an annual basis with local authorities. I want to say that we fully support the work that the Care Association do and previously we've had a really, really good working relationship as a care association and as a single provider with Leeds Council. This year feels a little bit different and I think that's why I wanted to come to raise our concerns around the process that's happened. In November, I wrote out to set out our cost pressures projected for this coming year of around nine and a half percent, and I think that's quite representative of all providers. I think between eight and 10% was a number that I've seen kind of touted in the reports. That is, we know there's exceptional increases to do with national insurance, living wage, that, you know, councillor Firth has touched on some of those things. But the other thing that I set out in the letter is the gap to the fair cost of care. So the government's provided funding to local authorities over the last few years to help try and bridge the gap to the fair cost of care, because the reality is that what it costs to deliver care is more than we are funded for by local authorities. So 9.5% is a standstill position, we actually need more than that to be able to start to bridge that gap to the fair cost of care. I didn't receive any response to that letter and I followed it back in January because, you know, Christmas comes and we know that that happens, but again, I didn't receive any response in January and then the survey came out. So we have responded to the survey, I responded by email with a small presentation as well as the actual survey itself, and I followed up a few times to try and request a meeting, and it's been a little bit disappointing to be honest, that I haven't been able to engage in that way, because I think it helps to have that collaborative approach where we do talk, providers, local authority, and just really understand what's happening locally. Just by way of comparison, other local authorities have variously carried out cost-of-care exercises to really understand the current cost of care. Provider forums, face-to-face meetings, Teams meetings, and that's all of the things that we haven't seen happen in Leeds this year. So that was where I wanted to raise some concerns around the process. And just to give a little bit of a ballpark as well, we're a national provider, we have seen increases of around 6% on average across England, Scotland and Wales, so it just kind of sets into context how far below the 3.5% falls, and obviously it's way below where we've projected our cost pressures, and the impact's being described, you know, it's things like investment into care will struggle or it will be privately focused rather than publicly focused, and as a care provider, we are very, very publicly funded, our residents, about 75% of our residents are publicly funded. Families will be asked to make up that difference more through top-ups, that that impact on choice is really significant, and I think when we're looking at higher acuity levels, investment into more specialist services will be limited because of the difficult market that people are operated in in Leeds. So I just wanted to bring a little bit of perspective and to kind of highlight where we feel the process has fallen short this year and why we would like to see that re-looked at. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, there's no need to be nervous there at all, you did a great job. Thank you for that. Okay, so now I'm going to, sorry, just stop that timer, I'm going to pass on to councillor Venna and then Cameron Heine for their turn to respond to this, thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chair and thank you to our witnesses for coming and sharing your experiences. I'm going to make some general opening comments and then I'll pass on to Caroline to talk in more detail. So our fee considerations for 2025-26 included current capacity in the market in home care, extra care, care home placements, both for older adults and for working age adults, the ability to find and agree packages of care and placements at our contracted rates, an analysis of our current fee levels relative to other authorities in the region, and the fact that historically we've set our fees at a higher level than most of our neighbouring local authorities. So in recent years, we've applied approximately 7% fee increases, and that's meant we've been in a strong position and it's reflected in us having a buoyant market. We have been mindful that employers' costs, providers' costs have increased quite significantly because of the employers' national insurance contributions and increases in the national living wage. And our fees have been set at rates which enable providers to pay their staff above the national living wage, because, which is really important because of our commitment as a council to paying care workers at the real living wage, and this was especially the case in home care. In recent years, we've applied an additional 40p per hour enhanced payment for home care so that providers can pass this directly on to care workers, pay them above the real living wage, and this has been really key in the recruitment and retention of care workers in home care. We consulted with care providers on our 25-26 financial year proposed uplifts because we knew we were not able to afford to pay the level of increases that we have in some recent years, because of the council's overall financial position, and also because of the increased pressure in social care with more people with high-level needs requiring support for longer periods. The feedback that we received from the care market was mixed, with the largest number of concerns coming from home care providers in relation to the proposed increase of 1.6%. We heard from a number of home care providers who said they would have to cease providing services in Leeds as the... as the percentage increase would not cover their costs. And we recognised that this would disrupt the care being provided to a significant number of people and would also potentially destabilise the care market. I would add that home care providers are more impacted by the employer's national insurance contributions because staff costs are overall a higher percentage of their total costs. With regard to care home providers, I appreciate what we've heard this morning from our witnesses. But in the consultation, we did not receive the same level of concerns about services and packages being handed back and care providers having to cease providing services. I would also add that we're not having difficulty finding local authority hair care home places at these rates. I'm really pleased to say we are not having to place people out of area. We're not having people stuck in hospital because we can't find care home places. The fifty percent of respondents referred to in the report and by councillor Firth, who referred to having to reduce capacity, were overwhelmingly home care providers. And we took on board the feedback from care providers to the consultation. And as a result of that, we took a board, a recommendation to executive board in April to allocate an additional three point seven million to the adult social care budget from the Social Care Reform Fund to enable the council to allocate a five percent increase in fees for home care. So despite the council's considerable financial challenges, we've listened to providers and we've made every effort to apply fee increases that will enable them to cover their costs. We will monitor the impact of our fee increases to see if we're finding it difficult to place people in care homes, if we're seeing delays in placements being made. And we will also monitor if there are any adverse implications such as more people being required to pay third-party top-ups, which has been referred to. And any trends will be picked up quickly by our brokerage team on the ground and will be taken into consideration when setting future fee increases. Officers will continue to meet with care providers individually and at provider forums to ensure we're actively listening to their concerns. When I was the executive board member for Adults and Health, I regularly met with the representatives of the Leeds Care Association. And I know that councillor Arif, as a current exec board member, regularly meets with provider representatives. As a council, we very much value the services that are being provided to the residents of Leeds by our many care providers. And we will continue to work with them, recognising the significant financial pressure that the whole care sector is under. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Caroline, do you want to come in next?
Thank you very much, yes. Um, I'll, I'll add a little bit more detail to some of the overview that councillor Venna has provided. And I'll try and respond to some of the issues that have been raised by witnesses that councillor Firth has brought. Um, I, I think, I think it's really important to, to stress the bit around the responses that we received from the consultation around providers saying that they would have to exit the market, cease providing services. We received a total of a hundred and forty-two responses. Uh, fourteen of those respondents said that they would uh have to consider exiting or reducing the amount of capacity that they're able to provide. Um, out of those, as councillor Venna has already alluded, majority were home care providers. Uh, only four care home providers said that they felt that um there might have to be some reflection around the amount of capacity. And none of that was older people's care homes, that was working-age adults' care homes providers. Um, and we have a very different approach to fee setting with uh working-age adults' care homes because we uh have uh individualised, personalised fee rates set depending on the need of individuals. The older people's care homes are standard rates. Um, we have a, a standard residential rate, a residential dementia rate, a nursing rate and a nursing dementia rate. And they take into account uh levels of complexity of need. So we recognise that people with dementia have higher level of uh care needs, mainly supervision more than anything. Not necessarily more personal care, not necessarily more nursing care, but certainly more oversight. So we reflect that in our fee structure. Um, so the responses we got, um, as councillor Venna has said, we were really quite concerned from the home care market. We um had nine of the home care providers actually request a specific meeting with us as officers. Uh, I met with them, uh, and basically they were very clearly saying that they would have to exit the market if we were only going to allocate a one point six percent fee increase. They were nine of our largest providers, delivering approximately fifty percent of the home care. So we absolutely recognised that um we wouldn't be able to meet our statutory duties should that um situation arise. And therefore, we had to reflect back on uh our ability to um just apply a one point six percent increase and we might have to consider increasing that. So we took that uh back. Uh, we did not get that same level of feedback from the consultation from care homes and particularly not from older people's care homes. Councillor Venna has already um touched on our market oversight and market capacity. We monitor capacity all the time, really routinely. And that includes um the ratings, the CQC ratings of the care homes, uh, looking at ensuring that we've got adequate levels of good quality providers as well. Um, and, and we, we keep a, a view and we work with those providers who are saying that they're having difficulties. We've got a special um, a specific team, a, a, a quality care quality team that works with providers who are saying that they've got difficulties either because of their finances or because of other factors, workforce turnover, keeping and holding on to managers. And we work with those providers in a really proactive way so that we're supporting the market considerably. We also look at benchmarking um uh across our different um uh organisations, sorry, across the different um regions. Uh, and we've got a really good uh insight into how many, how much our fees are. Uh, as already alluded to, historically, we've been a really high payer of fees across home care and across care homes as well. Um, our current fee increases, um, we've benchmarked against um other areas of Yorkshire and Humber. And we still remain as high to mid-range in our fee levels for care homes and for home care. Residential care, we are um now a slightly lower fee payer, but that is because we've still got oversupply of residential care. We've said to our care market, both in terms of our market position statement um and in our correspondence with care homes, that we want to reduce the numbers of care homes that we um commission services for. And the numbers show that, um, particularly residential care, uh, we've got oversupply. And we really do want to support more people to stay at home. And we know that um people themselves would choose and often do choose to stay at home with the right levels of support and care, including at end of life. And that's why it was all the more imperative that we looked at the sustainability of the home care market. So that's where we put, um, put most of our sort of focus. Uh, went back to exec board, uh, and in exec, in, in April, exec board allocated a further three point seven percent, three point seven million pounds to enable us to increase our fee allocation from one point six percent to five percent for home care, because that is where we've looked at where our biggest risks are. We really don't think we've got risks around care home capacity. But as, as already said, we will continue to keep a really close eye on this because we do, because we work regularly and routinely with the market um around their capacity. If I can just come to the um, uh, points that have been raised around our consultation process and uh our sort of communication on our, with, with our market. I think um the budget-setting process probably has been a bit frustrating for our providers. Normally, we are in a position to have determined our fees and um given the signal to the market around our fees for the forthcoming year. And we usually do that quite early in the calendar year. This year has, it has been different, or in the last financial year, it has been different. And that's because our fee proposals were set um around November. Uh, and then subsequently, obviously, we heard around the impact of the increases in the changes to the employer's national insurance contributions, which we recognise are going to have an additional cost pressure to providers. We also li- listened to what um, uh, the, the feedback that was being um provided to other local authorities and the local uh government association. And during January and February was where we could really see the impact of uh the, it changes in the employer's national insurance contribution. And that's why we decided that we really did need to do a consultation. It was later than we would normally do and therefore that consultation started in February. It was for five weeks. And we uh encouraged feedback in terms of meetings and verbal um feedback as well. As I say, we certainly met with um a, a, a number of home care providers at their request during the course of the consultation process. It wasn't as we would have normally have wanted it, um, but it was complicated by the uh announcements that came quite late in the financial year last year around uh provider cost pressures. We've reviewed that process and we will want to make sure that we do consultation. If, if we think our fee increases for future years look like they're going to be quite low because of our financial pressures, then we will want to undertake consultation quite early in the year. We've already indicated to um our care providers at our provider forums that um if they're minded to, we will run cost-of-care exercises, which are open book exercises to consider provider costs. And they will then inform us around future fee settings. So yes, we've got to take some learning, recognise that consultation was a bit late in the, in the, in the day relative to where we would like to be, uh, and we'll consider how we improve that going forward. Um, I just want to make that final point around, we, we are confident that we've got adequate capacity and adequate choice in the market of care home provision, uh, including choice for people who need them. Uh, and we will continue to keep an eye on that and make sure that that is the case. We can go back and we can do some market facilitation if we find that there are any particular pressures in any geographical part of uh the city in the future. Um, that's all I want to say at this moment in time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that, um councillor Venna and Caroline. That's um helpful information. So we're now moving on to the questions from board members. So if you want to ask a question, um, please indicate in, in the usual way and I'll bring you in, in order. Um, given, I'll just start if that's okay. Um, so I've got sort of two questions and probably for you, Caroline. So the, the first one is around uh benchmarking around other cities. And I know you said that, that in this case, I rate it probably at the lower end, um, which answers sort of part of my question. I guess the other part is around how's our capacity compared to other uh cities in, in our area. And then the second question I had was just um some clarity around uh this quality care payment that the Mary Lou brought up. Um, and sort of understanding what that is and what your perspective of that is. So thank you.
I, I heard the first question, but I'm afraid I didn't hear the second question.
Yeah, so the second one, so Mary Lou brought up her quality care payment. Um, and so despite the um increase, um, she said that the average per person per week has gone down. So just want to understand your perspective on that, because obviously it's been brought up. So it'd be good for you to address that. That's the second one. Um, and so members, please indicate to me if you want to ask a question.
Thank you. So um, yes, of course, I'll, I'll answer. In terms of capacity, um, we, we, um, there is something called the Capacity Tracker. So all care homes themselves are required to report to the Department of Health and Social Care the amount of capacity they've got. That um Capacity Tracker is available to us and to all other local authorities as well so that we can keep an eye on uh ensuring that there is a sustainable market going forward. In terms of, I mean, I'd just like to point to the capacity that we know we've got in, in the Leeds area, if you don't mind. So um, uh, our information from Capacity Tracker tells us that we've got quite stable capacity. Um, uh, in twenty twenty-five, we've got uh seven hundred and sixty-one vacant beds in our older people's care homes. Um, and that compares directly, actually, it's not, sorry, it's not just older people, it's across all of the uh care homes, working-age adults as well. Seven hundred and sixty-one vacant beds at any one time currently. Um, this is very similar to previous years. Last year, there were seven hundred and thirty-seven vacant beds. But also, we monitor um occupancy levels and occupancy levels are around eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three percent. So we know that care homes have capacity. Um, since twenty twenty, we've had nine new care homes enter into the market. Um, and that includes two that had previously closed, they reopened. And we've had seven new purpose-built co- care homes. Uh, and this is mainly older people's care homes. And that added a further five hundred and forty beds in, in the, the whole of the Leeds area. Six of these were residential homes, um, and three were nursing. And we're expecting another large residential home to open as well later in the year. At the same time, we had eight care homes closed, five residential and three nursing, and that was equating to four hundred and sixty-nine beds lost. So overall, our capacity has increased year on year rather than decreased. So we know that there is provision in the market. Um, uh, and uh, this is the case in other geographical areas as well. Um, I think places like North Yorkshire really struggle with capacity. Uh, but in Leeds, we've got sufficient. And we have reduced the numbers of people we have to place out of area just because uh of capacity. If we're placing out of area, particularly for older people, it's through choice because families want um, uh, their, uh, elderly parent coming closer to where they live. So we, we facilitate that choice. So that's where we do tend to place out of area. And it's not because of necessity. Um, in terms of the Quality Premium Payment, for a number of years, um, we were struggling with the quality of care. So um, uh, in the region of about fifty to fifty-five percent of care homes were either rated good or, or outstanding. So we had quite a high number of um inadequate or requires improvement-related um care homes uh for a number of years in Leeds. We used the Quality Premium Payment as just one way of supporting the uh market to improve its quality. We also invested in the Care Quality Team, a, a team of one team manager and three uh, um, officers to work with those providers that were delivering poor quality care. So there were various different initiatives to help improve the quality and the standards of care being delivered. And what we have seen generally has been a, a really good improvement in the um number of care homes registered as good. Now, it did decrease following Covid, but again, we've continued to work with the market to improve quality. And we hear some really positive feedback from care home providers around the support they get from the Care Quality Team and our contract monitoring teams as well. Um, because of our financial situation and the financial challenges, we have uh determined that we ceased to pay the Quality Premium Payment. Um, now that continues to be paid for existing uh care homes that were getting it for existing residents, just not new residents. So we recognise that for some homes, uh, that might have had a detrimental impact compared to the fees that we are now paying. But the number of care homes that were getting the Quality Premium Payment was, was reducing anyway. So it was only a small number of homes that would be impacted. And it doesn't impact on those that were already getting the payment in terms of the numbers of residents. So that, we've co- continued our commitment to fund those homes, for those placements, those individuals, um, and not remove that for existing uh residents. But we recognise that for a small number of homes, this might have a, have an impact. But overall, um, we will continue to ensure that we don't see uh lower fee levels being applied to care homes generally.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Firth?
Thank you, Chair. I know it's not customary for us to come back on that, but I want to just add a few things from our perspective as witnesses. In terms of you've asked the question about benchmarking, uh, the Leeds Care Association has pulled together figures whereby Leeds's uplift is far below uh those of its immediate neighbours. For example, three point five percent for residential care in Leeds and uplift compares to eight percent in North Yorkshire proposed for next year, seven point five percent in Bradford and at least ten percent in Wakefield. I fully appreciate the financial situation, but that provides, I feel, a little bit more meat on the bone. And those figures have come from the Leeds Care Association. And I'd also like to ask from the figures that were quoted by understandably the officer and the executive member, how many of those new care homes entering the market are actually private care homes? And how, and at the same time, I mean, how many of them have actually got beds across the city? that are available for local authority placements? Or whether they are primarily going to be private personal funders? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Firth. In terms of questions, I think the board asks questions just in terms of protocol. So maybe one of your fellow members might ask those questions in due course. But I guess I accept that you want to make some comments, so I've allowed that. Okay, I'm going to bring in councillor France here.
Thank you. Councillor Venna and Caroline touched upon this earlier, but I think the response that Caroline's just given regarding the struggle to find care home placements since the 3.5 uplift and our individuals stuck in hospitals because of unable to find a place. I think you've answered that question regarding capacity and being able to to find places for those residents. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Anderson?
Thank you, Chair. So we've got overcapacity, so we're not really bothered if care homes close. That's the message that's coming across here. But that's people's homes and we know that elderly people and their families, if they get moved somewhere else, it's very stressful, it's very upsetting and actually causes a deterioration in their health and bad outcomes for them. So the home care providers, who you say we do need because we want to keep people in their own homes, they can't manage on these fees either. 3.5% won't cover the increases in the national insurance and the minimum wage, especially because of the threshold dropping from 9,000 to 5,000 in budget, bringing more employers into having to pay those costs. So that's a massive blow. The 40 pence an hour councillor Venna mentioned that they pay extra, that's actually been swallowed up by the removal of the hospital retainer payment. So that's actually gone down by 10%, not by 10 pence, not up by 40 pence. And the other thing I want to touch on is where's the communication gone wrong? We've heard from the witnesses that correspondence has gone unanswered. Requests for meetings have been ignored. So what is happening? Why is that broken down? Why is that relationship broken down? Thank you.
Okay, Caroline, do you want to come in on that?
Yeah, I'll answer some of them and then I'll hand over to Cash if that's okay. Of course, we absolutely do care if care homes close. That wouldn't be in the interest of residents in the care homes at all or for the workforce for that matter. But we have not had that indication, I would say, over and over again, that we have not had feedback from the consultation where older people's care homes have said that they will have to close and exit the market. Care homes do close from time to time for various different reasons. And often, it's not because of, purely because from, in terms of the finances. But we work with care homes. We, as I said, we've got what we call a RAG rating system where we look at care homes around their quality. And as, and part of that includes financial sustainability. And if care homes are expressing concern about high levels of vacancies and that impacting on their financial viability, because obviously they can't continue if they've got many vacancies. What we do is we work with our contracting and commissioning staff, our brokerage team specifically, who work very, very closely with care homes. They know all of the care homes in the specific patches that they cover. They know how many vacancies they've got. They know when they're open and receptive to new placements. Those staff in the brokerage team meet with and speak regularly with our social work teams to say, if you know of people, if you're assessing people who need care home placement, these are the care homes in this area that have got vacancies. So we share that information for the benefit of care homes so that we can make sure that they are not running voids and vacancies for any extensive periods of time. So we really try and work close to the ground with care homes. And we're very, very keen to support improvements in quality and to work in partnership with care homes. We recognise that the fee increases that we're allocating won't cover employers' national insurance contribution changes. We recognise that, but that's not refined, specific to care providers. That's across the board. Many, many, many organisations inside social care and outside of social care have recognised that, you know, the costs to them as employers have increased. But we aren't in a position to cover all of the providers' costs as they all arise. In terms of the removal of the hospital retainer payment, we haven't removed it, we've just reduced it. So some years ago, we introduced a two-week retainer for home care providers where we, for care homes, it's not relevant anyway because if it's somebody's home in a care home placement and they go into hospital, it doesn't matter how long they're in hospital. We continue to pay that care home for that bed whilst that person is in the care home because of course, it's their home and they need to go back there. For home care, we applied a two-week retainer payment because what we were finding was that home care providers, if somebody went into hospital, they would move their staff capacity and pick up new packages. And that person potentially could be delayed in hospital and couldn't get home because they had to wait for the home care provider to give more or new capacity. So paying the two-week retainer has really helped the home care market. But we also know that even during that two-week period, the home care agency will still allocate new work and different work to those workforce. They don't sit around not doing anything just because the person they're supposed to be visiting is currently in hospital. What we found is that we've got a huge amount of buoyancy in the home care market. And again, we track this routinely, weekly, around how long it takes for providers to offer us capacity and pick up packages. And our capacity is improving all the time. We're down to less than five days where somebody goes into hospital and is deemed ready for discharge. And a new home care provider will be available and will pick up the package within five days. An existing provider, because we're holding the spot with that home care agency for a week, they pick up within days. So people are not being delayed in hospital for any length of time because of the changes in the hospital retainer payment. We recognise that that impacts on how much money we pay the home care providers, but it doesn't impact negatively at all in terms of providers being able to deliver timely home care. In terms of the communication gone wrong, we have had quite a lot of feedback from providers early on, as soon as the changes were happening around employers' national insurance contribution. And we're beginning to hear and receive letters. We get letters, it's a cycle. We get letters from providers routinely every single year during the sort of fee setting period. And we respond when and as we can. I did say that this time, the process was somewhat protracted and we were in a little bit of a state of limbo because we thought we needed to start the consultation process and we started that quite late in the day. So recognise that some of the communication was not as responsive and as quick as we have done previously. But I'll let Cash in if you wanted to add any more around providers asking for meetings with you and your teams.
Yeah, just to add that we do contract with over 400 care providers and we do receive lots of letters around setting fee rates and also for meetings. I think as Caroline has mentioned, that some, this process was extremely challenging this year. And I think that I'm sure there will be more learning for my team also to ensure that we are much more robust in our communication for future purposes as well.
Councillor Anderson, have you got a supplementary or follow-up? Thank you very much, councillor Anderson. Okay, I'm going to bring in Jonathan next. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I know that you're trying to develop the Community Health and Wellbeing Service and it would be useful to know whether the free structure that you've got, you're confident you will still be able to develop that so it's more responsive in the way in which you're expecting and will continue to be able to work with health in order to do that.
Thank you. So the Community Health and Wellbeing Service, it's a very small pilot. It started in September 2024. And what we are doing currently is looking at the cost model because we pay a higher rate for that, because we want to try and encourage home care agencies to pay their staff on shift basis. But what the model is based on the fact that we would expect packages of care to reduce over time because the home care providers will be applying a very different approach to the one that they do currently. And a very strong focus on re-ablement, on therapy and on accessing community support, including third sector support, to try and help reduce the numbers of hours of care a person needs through the home care agency over time. And so the whole point of that pilot is to understand whether financially it will, it will work that we pay a higher hourly rate, but that overall, the cost of home care is retained within our current level of spend. If we find that that is the case and that we can work with the providers in a very proactive way to, with those re-ablement principles and reduce the size of packages, then, and there isn't an additional cost pressure for us, then absolutely, we feel that we would be able to commit to that sort of pricing structure. But I have to be honest with you, it's very early days yet. We're still trying to work out whether, we can see that it's a better impact on the workforce and on the two home care providers that are delivering the home care. What we haven't yet seen is whether there is a sustainable reduction in the packages of care. So we've got to continue with that pilot to see if that does materialise, in which case that will demonstrate that that's the model we will go forward with going forward.
Thank you. And just to say that certainly, I think the board takes that project pretty seriously. And I think it's on the agenda for November time, presuming the board agrees the proposed agenda next week at their, the next, their scrutiny board meeting. Okay, thanks for that, Jonathan. I'm going to bring in councillor Ritchie next.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the witnesses, councillor Firth and officers and councillor Venna for your presentations. I made some notes as the witnesses spoke. And I think, to be fair, most of them have been addressed by the officers and councillor Venna. And the sort of bone of contention seems to be around capacity, which we're adamant that we have. And a lot of the issues raised were related to that reduced providers. So I think that's been sort of tackled. In terms of, I think Michelle raised the CARE Act considerations. So I wonder if officers could just give us some assurance that due regard has been given to the CARE Act as mentioned. There's a mention of other neighbouring local authorities paying more. But what I think I'm hearing is that we already pay higher. So if you could just clarify that point, which I think councillor Firth made. There clearly has been an increase in the budget that's stated in the papers. And I note that that's from the contingency reserve fund. So if you just perhaps expand on some of those pressures, financial pressures, if we were to look at increasing the rate. And then also around the fair cost of care, which I think Lesley mentioned. So again, what our strategy is in relation to that and compared with other local authorities. And then if I may go on, just to some of the risks that are highlighted. So this is on page 31 of the report, starting at bullet point 27. And it does talk about one of the risks being around dementia care. So could you give us a bit more detail around that and how that fits into the risks that have been mentioned around potential closures and what have you and capacity? I do get reassurance that you mention around the commitment to review the situation. And you've proven that, to be fair, in bullet point 27.4, in that you've reacted and delivered to home care pressures during this process, which I recognise. Then the final risk is around the NHS impact and bullet point 29. And it talks in point two around the risks of costs to the council who will be responsible for fees until a longer term placement can be found. So if that starts to occur, can we address that swiftly? Because I imagine that could prevent, create some budget challenges if that's to come to pass. So a few questions there, but hopefully we're all heard and noted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Ritchie. So yes, we've addressed the concerns around capacity and reduction in capacity. The next question you asked was about our CARE Act considerations. So part of the CARE Act requires me as the Director of Adults Social Care to ensure that there is viability within the care market and that there is sustainability from a fees perspective. And also that I'm able to ensure that there is choice of providers in the market. So that's, those are the CARE Act considerations. And that is the work that we've, we're doing around checking constantly around where there is capacity, where there might be reduced capacity, where there's pressure, where providers are saying to us, we've got financial difficulties. And that's the work we do all the time in our commissioning team, in Cash's team, working with providers to check that we haven't got any particular pressures in any particular areas. If I can, I'll bring the dementia care question into that particular response because that was one of the areas that we were seeing quite a lot of pressure, that providers were just not able to deliver, you know, good quality and adequate levels of dementia care, recognising that people with dementia need more supervision and therefore that costs more to providers because they have to employ more staff. So what we have done is worked with the market to increase the capacity of dementia, both residential and nursing. And that includes externally provided, so from external organisations, but also our own in-house care homes around dementia. And we've made some really significant inroads recently. So we're working with one provider, external provider, who has converted their nursing home into specific dementia, high level needs dementia provision. It has been operating at really good capacity. And as a result of that, that provider has also converted their other two care homes in Leeds. So all three homes now providing dementia capacity. So where we were worried around the amount of dementia provision and me feeling not sure that I was able to fulfil my statutory CARE Act duties around choice in terms of dementia provision, we've addressed that. We're also now expanding our dementia for people leaving hospital and having sort of stepped down into mediate care dementia provision as well. And we're doing that jointly with our health partners. So that was one area where we thought there were potential risks and gaps. And we've managed to do a lot of work to address that. So that's just one example of how we would, should we find ourselves in a position where providers are saying we aren't able to deliver the capacity and we start to see that there is an adequate choice in the market. That's where we will absolutely do more and focus our energies. In terms of councillor Firth's point that you've raised around other local authorities paying more, absolutely, we can see that many of the local authorities in the Yorkshire and Humber region have increased their fees for the 25, 26 period higher than our fee levels. And the home care now probably is quite equitable, but the care home fees, our care home fees of 3.5% for 25, 26 are lower than the fee increases that are being applied by quite a large number of the local authorities in the Yorkshire and Humber region. But as I say, our starting position has been higher. We have been a higher fee payer for many years. And our data shows us that for nursing homes and for dementia provision, we continue to be mid to high band in terms of our fees. So other provide, other local authorities are catching up with our fees and are feeling that they have to apply a higher level of increase relative to us. And we've still, we're still doing well in terms of our fees. The only area The only area where we're probably now sort of mid to lower rate is in residential, not residential dementia, just residential. But that's again, part of our market management strategy. We want fewer residential care homes because there are care homes, too many care homes and quite a lot of capacity. And we shouldn't be expected to pay that vacancy levels, those voids, that capacity of, you know, in the region of 18%. If providers are holding that level of vacancy, we shouldn't be compelled to pay that. And so the market needs to adjust. And we keep saying to the market very loudly and very clearly in our provider forums, in our market position statement, that we want fewer people to go into residential care. In some local authority areas, I'm aware that they don't place people in residential care at all. They stopped using residential care because they think people should be offered care in an extra care facility or in their own homes. And it might be at higher cost. I mean, Michelle made the point that residential care is more expensive to the local authority and therefore the local authority is putting more into home care. Sometimes people, particularly towards end of life, are getting even larger packages of care in their own home, and this could be at a higher level than the residential fee rate. But that's because that's in the best interests of the individual and their families, they want to stay at home. And that is absolutely the commitment that we've given as a local authority, that we support more people to stay at home if that's their choice to do so. And again, that's another reason why we've wanted to increase our fees for home care and ensure that we've got a buoyant home care market. In terms of your question around the contingency reserve, so yes, there's a social care reserve that is held corporately, and out of that, 3.7 million has been allocated specifically to increase our fees for home care and supported living. There's a little bit of reserve still left, and that is, we will draw upon that, should we find in the next few months going forward that we start to see the capacity drying up and providers saying they can't deliver, particularly care home providers saying they can't deliver services. And if we see a reduction, then there is a little bit of reserve that we can go back to our elected members, go back to executive board and say, we need to draw on some of that reserve because the market is demanding it. I've already addressed the question around dementia care. You've said that we've got a commitment to sustain, to review our situation, and absolutely that's what we will continue to do, as we have done for home care. In fact, in relation to your last point around the impact on, in terms of the NHS, and this was particularly, we were worried about the 1.6% for home care more than anything. Would that result in people being stuck in hospital and us not being able to get people back home again quickly enough if the home care providers were saying, we're not able to give you the capacity you need? And particularly if we were going to see a 50% reduction in home care because providers decided that they would not be able to continue to deliver home care in Leeds? And that's why we've addressed that with that additional fee increase. We don't think that there will be that massive impact on the NHS now, because, as I say, we monitor every week how long it takes for people who are in hospital to go home or to get a placement in a care home setting. And we will continue to keep an eye on that. And should that be a negative impact, then again, we will go back in terms of that social care reserve and draw on that if it's needed. I hope that answers all of the questions you've asked, but happy to answer any more.
Thank you. Just because the rate and the capacity point is the, I think it's the big point of contention, I'm just going to give Michelle, who's from Leeds Care Association, a chance to comment. And then if you've got supplementary after that, councillor Ritchie, I'll bring you in. Thank you. I've got your councillor, James, I will come to you next.
Thank you, Chair. Caroline, I'd just really like to understand how provider costs...
So, Michelle, just to be clear, I'm giving you an opportunity to respond to councillor Ritchie's question rather than respond to Caroline. So in terms of capacity, just in terms of the process, there's questions to be asked and then you can respond. So I'm interested in your view on the market and capacity and rates versus the neighbouring authorities, because that's something that you've raised. And I'm judging by the animated faces that you may have a slightly different view. So I'm trying to give you an opportunity to express a different view, not a chance to have a dialogue with Caroline. I hope that's clear, and sorry if that's not exactly what you want.
Thank you. So our understanding from talking to providers is that there will definitely be reduced capacity available to the local authority directly because of the funding issues. We know from the work that we've undertaken in terms of pulling together cost of care reports, that the local authorities, other local authorities, actually the ones that have given higher fee increases this year, were actually paying more than Leeds last year anyway. So, and we've got the sort of figures that back this up, so it's, we do have that information that Leeds were not necessarily the highest paying local authority in comparison to some of the other local authorities within Yorkshire and the Humber. We've collated that information within our own cost of care report. So as councillor Firth said, Wakefield have suggested a fee increase of over 10%, and their starting point for residential care was £737, so compared to Leeds's residential care, which was 694. We've had lots of conversations with providers about them increasing costs, both for self-funders and for those that are paying a third party contribution. And we have to consider that not all the family members will have the means or will struggle to pay those third party costs, which I think Mary Lou has already expressed. So we do have real concerns that there will be real impacts on people that use the services, whether that's waiting for a longer time for a placement within a care home or waiting for a placement, a care package with home care services. But we think that now that providers are starting to see the impacts of the additional staffing costs and the employers' NIC, particularly within the home care services, which typically employ more part-time staff, then they're going to start making tough decisions as to whether or not they're able to continue because of the financial sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments there. Okay, councillor Ritchie, do you have a supplementary?
Just thank you for answering those questions. The only one that I think is outstanding is our approach to the fair cost of care, which was brought up, please. Thank you.
Yes, sorry about that. Yes, it is on my list. Sorry, I do apologise for not covering that. So we don't do an annual cost of care exercise, partly because it's very time consuming, partly because providers don't particularly like it, and we don't always get a very good response. We have to really push hard for providers to be willing to open their books and do a cost of care. And if we're lucky, we get in the region of about 30, 33% providers responding to a cost of care exercise. We did do a comprehensive cost of care exercise in 2021, 22, because it was mandated by central government that all local authorities undertook cost of care exercises for care homes and for the first time for home care in Leeds. We'd already done a cost of care exercise the previous year. So we'd already got some benchmarking in terms of what providers were saying were their costs. We repeated it and did it again in collaboration with the Leeds Care Association. They worked with us on it and they were partners in commissioning the cost of care exercise. So we did two, home care and care homes. Again, it was really hard to get providers to respond to it. But what came out of that was a set of fees and a formula, and we have used that same formula year on year to determine fees since 2122. So in 2324, 2425, we used that formula, and that enabled us to demonstrate the need for applying something in the region of 6.97% fee increases. So the last two years, we had applied quite a high fee increase based on the formula. This financial year, because of our financial challenges, we were able to allocate fees for really asking providers to pass on the real living wage rates to their care workers. But the situation changed with the announcements around employers' national insurance contribution. So we didn't have time to do a cost of care exercise to inform fees for 2526, because those changes happened quite late. And we did a consultation because that way, at least we were talking to the market, even though we were not asking them to do a robust, open your books and do a cost of care exercise. But in, as part of that discussion, and we were meeting with providers, we're having provider forums, which CASH chairs, which Michelle attends, and a number of providers attend, where we did mention that if we weren't able to allocate any more than our 1.6% and 3.5%, we could consider undertaking a cost of care exercise for the next financial year to inform future fees. So that's been something that we've said we could do if the market says it wants to. But to some extent, there's a lot of reluctance from providers in terms of willingness to undertake a cost of care exercise.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring in councillor James next.
Hi, thanks, Chair. I worked in this sector for three years, up until having Covid came. And at that point, I decided that the risk was not enough. To answer councillor Anderson's concern about care homes shutting down, the three homes that I saw shut down were shut down after three fairly bad CQC reports, and people decided rightly that they wanted to move their people to a more, something that had a better review. That was the reason they shut down. And I accept that that was upsetting for some of the residents, but that was the main reason for closure. It wasn't due to finance. I'm now going to quote from a newspaper, which will surprise people, which is the Daily Telegraph, which says, 'Care Home Investors Raking Billions From Cash Cow Pensioners'. And it claims, this is from May this year, I'm not saying it's correct because newspapers, how can I put it, can be slightly wrong occasionally, in my view, most of the time for me absolutely. But they claim that the profit level is between 30 and 40%. And a lot of the companies, well, a lot of the companies are run by private equities companies that also have a massive tax relief. So the particular four that it names in this article, and I don't know if anyone is here from them, are Four Seasons, KUK and HC1. All are still giving massive dividends to their shareholders. So I'm not quite, I'm more concerned that we might be overpaying, to be absolutely honest. That's my honest view. So I'm interested in what your view is on that.
Thanks councillor Jones. Lesley, I don't know if you can, or want to comment on that point, and I think it links to the point about the cost of care and whether you're keen to engage in that sort of thing. So over to you, Les.
Thank you. Yes, I represent HC1. We are one of the largest care organisations, a national organisation, and we are backed by investors. Our investors have allowed us to invest in our staff. Over 80% of our staff are paid real living wage, even in areas where we aren't funded to pay that, and we've invested a huge amount into our environment. We haven't paid dividends, as far as I'm aware, for a number of years. I think that the reality is that 13, 40% profits are absolutely not what we see. I don't know in other providers' worlds whether that is real, but I think I mentioned that we are publicly funded in the main, and about three quarters of our residents are publicly funded. So we are price takers in that aspect. We are taking fees that local authorities have set, which is why we are so heavily engaged in trying to access the fair cost of care. And the reality of our ownership is that those investors are what allow us to invest in our staff and environments. And without having a well-funded, sustainable sector, those private investors won't be building new capacity, they won't be investing in care homes and specialist services, which is something that we're doing. So I think it's a bit divisive to kind of point to that element of funding. The sector as it runs requires on the mix. So we have smaller providers, we have the large providers, we have charitable providers. And the reality is that even charitable providers need to make a return in order to keep investing in themselves. And again, that 30 to 40%, I haven't read the article, so I am a little bit of a disadvantage there. But thank you for allowing me to comment, because I am HC1.
Thanks, Lesley. What you haven't done is given us what your profit target is.
We don't have a profit target. We have a very, very mixed, a mixed range of care homes, and we operate in a number of local authorities. We operate in over 80 local authority areas. And the reality is that there is cross subsidisation, cross subsidisation for organisations as large as us from private peers, which is an uncomfortable fact around the way that the social care sector works. But also, you'll find that we are probably subsidising across local authorities because insufficiencies in some areas will mean that homes are supported by what's happening elsewhere in the country. And that can't be sustained, and that's where we start to look at our portfolio and think about where we can operate and where someone else might be better operating.
Thank you. Do you want the supplementary? I can see you want to come in councillor Firth, and you're definitely going to get a chance to comment again at the end. And I think the question was specifically to the witness, but let me see what his supplementary question is, and then I think I might bring you in in a minute. Yep, councillor James.
Can I ask what amount of money you are paying as a dividend to the equity company poison?
I have to say that I don't think I'm able to answer that. It's not something I prepared for, for today. And I, as far as I'm aware, we haven't actually prepared, paid dividends over the last few years. Our accounts are public though, and there is a report that comes out with that. I can, I would imagine it's publicly available for everyone to realise, but I read, but I don't think we've paid dividends over the last few years as an organisation. Our money, everything we earn is being reinvested in the organisation.
Thank you. Councillor Firth, do you want to come in on this specific point?
Thank you. I can appreciate where councillor James is wanting to raise that, but I think that it actually debases this wider discussion whereby we have a very diverse market and sector in Leeds. I think the problem we have fundamentally with the information that's been provided by the council is that the report that was provided on the consultation and where that source of that information and what the responses were is not very clear, because that report hasn't been put in the public domain. And so I understand Caroline has quoted various different points, but we haven't actually been able to see which providers in the public domain have actually commented in Leeds in those particular ways. And though I appreciate that in this situation, one of those providers is here, they are also a provider that has clearly expressed that despite the fact that the council has said that it takes part in provider forums, has not engaged when somebody has actively tried to engage. And if the council believed it was a concern that they are paying too much to those providers, they haven't even engaged to discuss that in the first place. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Just to be clear, councillor Firth, that was councillor James' point, and I don't think he speaks for the executive board or the director, so I think that's a leap in that last comment. But I think we're going to move on from that. But I do think it's a fair line of questioning, which is, there is a range of providers, and some of them are private equity backed, and the fact is, private equity only gets involved to make money. Okay, I'm going to bring in councillor Bromley next.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to firstly thank Caroline for the accountability and transparency in when presented with critique on the consultation initially, and in terms of the difficulty that there has been a change in the NHS, in the NI contributions that has made the timeline around this not ideal, how it has ordinarily been between the council and partnerships. I think in terms of taking acknowledgement for that, I think is really important, and I think there's often a perception that when faced with critique, that there isn't any reflection on that. So I thank today that you've actually been really transparent about that, and I think that should be really welcomed. And I'm grateful also that you'll be looking into how that would be reflected in further consultations as well. I sort of see today mainly around the difficulty in that actually we're having feedback more from people, individuals and families, that they would like care packages to be different and that they would like to be cared for differently. And so it's actually creating more of an aut- actually creating more of an autonomy to what is being reflected to us opposed to what care homes want us to do. So I actually really welcome that these changes and consultations taking place. And I just want to be really, like, it has been answered a couple of times, but I just want to really clarify. So in terms of the nine home care providers that did say that they would struggle to provide care at one point six pay increase, that was fifty percent of our providers at the time, that since then, the change up to five percent has addressed those difficulties. And other than those that are represented today, have said that they will be able to continue care providing and that we have addressed those concerns.
Thank you very much councillor Bromley. So we have met with the nine care, well, actually, only three of the representatives attended, but we facilitated an in-person meeting with the home care providers. We were expecting more than nine, but more than three, sorry. But but nonetheless, what first and foremost, when we revised the fee offer to five percent, and so revised that proposal based on the feedback to the consultation, we got the nine home care organizations write a letter to us, sent me a letter, or actually sent the letter to Cash's team, copied me in, and said that they were really grateful that we'd looked again, reconsidered, and had increased our fee offer to five percent. And they want to work with us in partnership going forward. They did say that this will still be difficult for them. They will still have financial challenges because it doesn't cover the full cost pressures that they're experiencing, mainly arising from employers' national insurance contribution. So they were saying that. They also raised that they felt that in part, the real living wage requirement was challenging for them, particularly for the payment around the hospital retainer or for travel time, because they have said that they will pay at least the real living wage rate for direct contact time, direct care delivery time, but it might impact on other hours of home care that they use for travel time or supervision, training opportunities. So they're still expressing concern that the funding doesn't cover their full costs. What they have said, however, is that they're really grateful and they will continue to work with us. And none of them have come back to us and said, well, this five percent is still not enough, and therefore they will be instigating handing back packages. We've had no providers tell us that they will hand back packages of care.
Thank you, Caroline. Do you have a supplementary councillor?
Sorry, I just wanted to thank Caroline. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring in councillor Ley next.
Thank you, Chair. Can I first thank everybody for coming? I want to bring us back to the call in really, and the three elements that councillor Firth and others, other elected members have brought forward around proportionality, clarity of the aims and outcomes, and the consultation process. I think they have been simply outlined by the council in that this year, if I had to go away and say to somebody in one sentence, what happened at Callin, I will go away and say, Leeds City Council are clearly using the fee or the lack of fee increase this year to reduce the residential care market. Because you recognize that you've got seven hundred and sixty one vacancies. You've said many times that we have an oversupply of beds of residential care. I've got a, I think Michelle represents service users, or do you represent the the care providers?
Care providers, councillor.
Care providers, okay. Well, you outlined what you thought would be the impact on service users when you felt that there would be reduced services, there would be diminished choice, and that there would be handing back of packages of care. And then we heard very eloquently, despite feeling nervous, from Mary Lou, was it? Mary Lou, a small operator who has run a family care home, and I have to fear for the small operators in this city based on what we're doing this year around fees. I think larger providers, so HC One, et cetera, will be able to absorb the costs and find the savings necessary. But we will see a reduction in smaller care homes that go to the wall because they are being financially harbored by not getting enough money. I think Mary Lou said she'd gone from seven hundred and twenty something to seven hundred and eighteen pounds this year, despite employer national insurance, in spite of increased wages and living living wage, in spite of the cost of living, et cetera. We're actually giving some of our care providers less this year than we have other years. That cannot be right or fair. And we should not be diminishing the market through a thousand cuts. We should be having that open and honest discussion with the residential care market, not based on fees and how much we're paying them, but on oversupply, and asking them to come up with solutions to that oversupply in the city. I do have some questions. You've said we're aware that we're now down to an average of five days from hospital discharge, but I believe that was surrounding home care. Now, there's been a lot of talk about home care today, and some talk about care homes. But what is our length of average weight for a care home package if we have such information? I think we've answered why we're not paying as much this year as other local authorities, because it is quite clear that we are using fees as a way to shrink the market. So even though we recognize that our residential care homes, and I think Caroline talked about our residential care homes being at the lower end of the regional pay pay fee structure. I have a further question on spot purchasing. What have we have we considered the impact of spot purchasing if more and more of our providers go, we can't do it for the set fee, so we can't provide you with that service. But if you provide us with spot charging rate. So have we worked out or considered if there might be an increase in spot purchasing? And my final point, I talked about perhaps seeing smaller care homes go to the wall based on this decision. Do we have, do we have contingency plans in place if there is a sudden failure of one or more providers? And what do we do in the event? And should it be one of the large providers, of course, what do we do? There are my three questions. Impact on hospital discharges, spot purchasing, and contingency plans for care home failure. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Caroline, do you want to come in?
Yes, of course. I'll answer all of those questions in order. So the, I'll just clarify, the average days to broker home care is now two point seven days. So that's home care. This is data for April twenty seven. In April twenty two, it was four days. So we're continuing to see an improvement in in home care. For care homes, and specifically people in hospital waiting for a care home placement to be sorted out, that in the average days from the point at which an offer was made, was in twenty twenty four was six days. In twenty twenty five so far, it has been seven point eight days. Now, that takes into effect into account also that quite often, people in care, requiring a care home placement, a new care home placement, often the delay is as a result of families waiting to make a decision on which care home they want to choose. It's often not because of availability, and we haven't seen a reduction. In fact, we introduced a new brokerage team specifically for finding care home placements, because previously that used to sit with the relevant social work team. And we saw that the brokerage function works really well as a model for home care. So we've recently, only in eighteen months or so, as part of another Home First program, have we set a brokerage team up for care home placements. And we're finding that people can find placements quite quickly. Most of the delay is due to waiting for family to make a decision around their preferred choice of care home placement. So we are not seeing a significant impact. But I have to reinforce that we will keep looking at this, we will keep looking at the data and see if there's any changes. At the moment, there's no adverse impact. In terms of spot purchasing, usually spot purchasing happens if somebody has got a very specific care and support need that is over and above the standard level. So we have to think about that quite regularly. If somebody is in hospital and needs particular additional one-to-one staffing, we will agree a fee over and above the standard fee rate. So I don't want people to go away thinking that we've got a blanket approach, and it doesn't matter if a care home doesn't agree to take a placement, that person can just go without a care home placement. We will, we absolutely have the ability to and do on a daily basis negotiate a fee above the standard rate if we feel that there is an additional need. And usually, that happens for a short period of time. If if somebody is has got high level of need because they've just had a major surgery in hospital and need more care and support when they go into a care home, we might agree the standard fee plus additional spot payment for a period of time, and then we will review it. And if that need then decreases, then we go down to the standard fee. So we use that sort of arrangement. It's not really called a spot arrangement, it's called an additional one-to-one payment should that be needed. Overall, we don't make many placements at a spot purchased rate, which is an individualized fee rate. But we can do that. That is one of our tools in our kit available to us should we need it. Because the bottom line is, no matter what happens, if somebody needs a care home placement and they've been assessed as needing a care home placement, we will pay what it need, what is it takes to find that person a care home placement. We don't sit and say, well, you're not accepting it at our local authority fee rate. So sorry, we're not going to find you a placement because nobody's willing to offer you one. We absolutely have that individualized nuanced approach.
Sorry, Caroline, the question is, do we expect more of those to happen?
It's possible. It's possible. And we will keep an eye on that. We will see if that is the case. At this moment in time, we've we've heard one care provider come to us and say that they want an individualized spot purchased fee approach, but the market generally hasn't. That's not what we've had overall. But that's partly because we do agree additional payments over and above that standard rate. And therefore, you know, is there really a need for a variation by way of individualized spot negotiations? But that is not something that we would be closed to. We will absolutely open that. And we do that for working age adults, individuals anyway. In terms of the point around small operators, particularly those running a family home, I absolutely agree and understand that that is the position. The industry standard, it's commonly known in the care home market, that the most financially viable operating model is a care home of fifty to sixty beds. And any homes that are operating either smaller than that number, or even higher than that number, don't offer, they don't operate at optimum efficiency, financial efficiency. So up and down the country, we recognize that smaller care homes, particularly family care homes, have been disadvantaged. But that's the market. That's the way the market operates. And the council has no leverage in that. Because if we pay a higher rate to care homes just because they are smaller, then that's going to disadvantage people who choose a care home that might be larger. We've got standard fee rate regardless of the size of home. And the cost of care exercise is done with a view to understanding the costs of providers of all shapes and sizes, whether whether they're small providers or they're larger providers. And we know through those cost of care exercises, that small operators are usually have the greatest financial challenge, because the industry sort of norm is fifty to sixty bedded care homes. We absolutely recognize that.
Do you have any further there councillor Ley?
I also asked about what contingency plans do we have in the event of a care home going bust?
Sorry, you did. You asked about contingencies. So as I say, we have our engagement with the sector on a regular daily basis, both by our contracting staff assigned to particular homes. So we've got contract officers which are patch based, and they know all the homes in their areas. They meet with them whenever they want to, whenever the homes request meetings. We talk about financial viability. That's one of the very numerous numbers of features that are in our RAG rating system. So that is part of the consideration. So if care homes begin to say, we are really struggling, we will make sure that we go back to our elected members. We talk about, we think that there is a detrimental impact happening, and we need to put alternative contingency arrangements in place, including, if necessary, drawing on any further social care reserve if we feel that that is happening at quite a speed and quite a pace. We will not risk care providers, care home providers exiting the market for want of financial viability. So we will work with those providers should they express concerns that they can't continue to sustain their services. Because we don't want individuals who are living in care homes, which is their home, to have to upheaval, have the upheaval of moving to alternatives. But this is really sort of case by case, care home by care home basis, and we will consider that.
Thank you councillor Ley. Any supplementary on that? No, thank you. And you made your comments. Okay, so I can't see any other members indicating to ask questions. Okay. Usually after, when we get to two hours, I have a comfort break. But given we're getting there, do members want a five-minute comfort break? Or are we happy to carry on? Happy to carry on? Great. Okay, so what we're going to move on to is the summing up now. So I'm going to ask councillor Venna and Caroline to make some closing remarks, and then councillor Firth to make some closing remarks as well. So over to you councillor Venna.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And thank you to all the board members for your contributions and your incisive questions. As set out, under the CARE Act, Leeds City Council has a responsibility to ensure that we have a thriving market in home care, in care homes, in extra care, so that we can guarantee quality and choice, and also value for money. We have listened to providers, and as a direct result of the consultation, we added three point seven million into the adult social care budget to give home care providers an increased uplift. For home care, we are in the upper quartile of rates paid in the region, though we have acknowledged that we recognize that this year's rate for care homes is lower than some other authorities in the region. Although we've heard today that the current fee increases will destabilize the market and lead to a lack of placements, this isn't, as Caroline has set out, this isn't our experience on the ground. We're not struggling, even with the current fee fee uplifts, we're not struggling to find local authority placements. We're not placing people out of area. We're not having people waiting for long periods in hospital for care home places. And we didn't get feedback through the consultation that care home providers will will leave the market. As I said in my introductory comments, the fifty percent of people referred to in the report that talked about exiting the market were overwhelmingly home care providers, and we responded to their feedback. It's really not our view that choice for people looking for care home places is being It's really not our view that choice for people looking for care home places is being compromised. Having been one of the higher payers in the region in previous years, as we've set out, we have an oversupply in residential care home places, we have an adequate supply of nursing places, and as Caroline set out, we are increasing our capacity with regard to dementia care. That is in both relation to our own in-house provision through our intermediate care beds and through working with providers, some of whom have converted homes into dementia-specific nursing homes. Also, we've weighted previous uplifts in favour of both nursing care and dementia care to incentivise that part of the market where we previously had concerns about capacity. As Caroline has set out repeatedly, if we do experience any difficulties with placements going forward, this will be picked up quickly by our skilled and experienced brokerage team who are working on the ground. We will also monitor whether providers are increasingly have to, having to rely on third-party top-ups, and we do have the systems in place to monitor and track that. And all that evidence will be used to inform next year's fee uplift setting process. But currently, we are not experiencing challenges with local authority placements, so it is not our view that our current fees need to be increased from what is, what has been set out. Though, as Caroline has said, we do have the provision to make individualised spot purchase increase fees if we need to, to meet individual needs. But overall, we have an oversupply in a stable market. Our recommendation, therefore, to the board is that this decision is released for implementation and not referred back to exec board, which will only further delay providers receiving final confirmation of fees for 25, 26. Thank you.
Caroline, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't really have very much more to add to what councillor Venna has already said, but I just want to assure scrutiny board members that I absolutely take my statutory duties very, very seriously, and that includes ensuring that we've got a sustainable and viable market of care providers. And where we identify risks, we act quickly. We've done that with the fees that we've put forward for home care, and that was because there was a very real risk that we might have significant providers exiting the market, and that would impact very detrimentally on people who need home care. So we are responsive, we'll continue to be responsive. And the only other point I'd make is that we have worked really well with our care providers at various different levels, both day-to-day operational in supporting care homes and home care providers, but also at that strategic level. And we continue with that commitment, we will continue to meet with the Leeds Care Association. Councillor Arif has said to me before she went on leave that she absolutely is committed to continue to meet with Michelle as the chief officer for the Leeds Care Association and with other providers should they request such a meeting. So that dialogue will continue going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Okay, now councillor Firth, over to you to make your closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you to everybody for their contributions today to have a healthy debate and discussion about an issue that really does matter to a lot of us very personally. I just want to come back on a few of the points that have been raised, because I appreciate we've not had those opportunities. I just want to emphasise that the Care Act also places a duty on the local authority to consider provider costs, and therefore, when we do raise those situations about how we compare to some of our immediate neighbours, including comparable councils like North Yorkshire or Wakefield or Bradford, we have shown clearly that even though it has been said that, yes, we've offered significantly higher fees in the past, those fees also are not as comparable potentially to the height of the fees that are offered just over our border. So we have to be careful in terms of playing that there. There is also the mention that, just refuting the point that was mentioned in response to councillor Lay's comment, that it was potentially due to families that were now choosing, and that was delaying capacity. It's actually, in many ways, it's actually that families are looking for the homes with the lowest top-up fees. Because at the end of the day, this is about the fact that the nature of, has been warned that those people who pay top-up fees or extra fees on top of their actual care costs will be the people that will take the real burden that comes from those fees, not coming from the council. And the nature of where we also raise this is also, as councillor Lay raised, is actually in the points that have been raised too. Yes, it can be said that some respondents that have come back after the consultation, and there has been an increase, but it can be interpreted that they said they want to keep working with the council, yes, because they want to get heard and they want to make sure that what their position in the market is understood. Because although it wasn't had a chance to raise it in this particular section, we, from the providers on this panel, it's clear that the council does not meet regularly with those providers, and yes, they don't always share those particular costs, all views. And when those actual points were raised about their being asked to meet and asked to raise concerns, that hasn't been something that's always come to the view. Capacity is obviously assessed based on the number of days it takes from somebody getting an offer to getting them into that care setting, be it at home or be it in a residential setting. And I think that we're at the same time here, reducing that capacity will then actually mean that we are, meaning we're in a much difficult position in the years to come. And although that may mean that we have a bigger market available potentially for the bigger providers, we are then losing that choice that the council has really emphasised today in terms of actually having local providers, and also not only that, people having their own homes that they take when those smaller providers as well. We've covered a wide range of different issues today, from all of the different points that we've covered. There are things that we'd contest about the brokerage claims and things like that as well, in terms of the fact that it has been raised three or four times by Mary Lee about, with the brokerage team, about the lack of referrals to her particular home. And I think the nature of where these points come to the fore is the fact of it's easy to interpret some responses about wanting to engage with actually, as well as also wanting to make sure that they can still be heard and get what they deserve. Because at the end of the day, it is about the proportionality and the impact of this decision. Therefore, given what we've raised today, given what my expert witnesses have raised as well, and the understandable responses that have come from the council, I look forward to hearing your decision, and I hope is to refer that decision back and review it and increase those fees going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Firth, for that. So now we're going to move on to the decision, but just before we do that, I'm going to ask Nicole to, as our legal adviser to the board, just to remind us what specifically the legal consideration we're making as it is a call-in process.
Thank you, Chair, yes. Just to advise members as to what your role is, the specific role in relation to this decision that has been called in, that is to decide whether the decision has been made correctly in accordance with proper procedures and has taken a robust approach in relation to the grounds that councillor Firth has just clearly set out. It's not to ask a decision to be reconsidered because you are of the view that it's the wrong decision, or that you've heard about the impact. We've heard a lot about impact today, but actually, your role is to decide whether the procedures were followed right, not whether the impact is something that you don't agree with. So you should only have regard to what you've heard today in relation to those grounds. So just very quickly, in relation to proportionality, you'd need to decide is a decision so much out of proportion to the needs of the situation as to be, as to be considered unreasonable. There are, the consultation, you've heard quite a lot about that, or have heard, or you have heard about some learning that has been taken about from that, but you have to still consider whether what did happen was still robust, albeit it's been acknowledged, timing could have been better. And then in relation to aims and objectives, it's just, is, does the decision flow from what the aim of the, and the objective of the purpose of why those fees needed to be considered? So it's really about that rather than the actual impact, which I know you have heard a lot about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've read the call-in paper, so now we get to the point about whether we have a proposed motion. We have option one and option two before us. Can I ask someone to propose one of those options? Councillor Bromley?
I propose option one, which is to release the decision. Is that correct?
That is what option one is, if that's what you mean. Can I have a second there? Councillor Jones, okay. I'm going to call for vote, all those in favour of that option. All those against? Okay, as Chair, I confirm option one, release decision has passed, and so that is the decision of this board. Before I close this meeting, I'd just like to, I recommend my appreciation for the witnesses. I really appreciate your coming. What you've said has been important, and even if, even as this result isn't what you want, it has brought it into the focus of the boards, that is a positive thing, and I think there'll be an opportunity for us to look at those waiting times and monitor this more closely going forwards. And so your contributions have been heard and have been valuable. The next meeting is a normal scrutiny board meeting, I don't think there's time for another call-in before next Tuesday. So next meeting, as you know, is at 1.30 next Tuesday, we've got a pre-meeting at 1 o'clock, so hopefully see you there. And so again, thank you everyone for coming and thanks for your time. Okay, good afternoon.